All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Sparta Township Planning Board. I'd like to call this meeting in order. For the record, this meeting is being held on December 6th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. at the Sparta Township Municipal Building located at 65 Main Street, Sparta, New Jersey. And a live stream can be viewed on YouTube at www.youtube.com/spartatwp. Please note that adequate public notice of this meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Let's begin with a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dory, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Dean Blumetti.
Here.
Jeanette Burke.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ron Day.
Here.
Christine Dunbar.
Here.
Bill Enright.
Here.
Justin Canales.
Here.
Angela Cassie.
Here.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano.
Here.
Ernest Reigstad.
Here.
Mike Sylvester.
Thank you. So we will be moving into an executive session to discuss attorney-client privileged matters and personnel interviews and contract negotiations. No action is intended to be taken on these particular matters after the closed session. And we will be moving directly into our hearings once we return to open. So Tom, if you wouldn't mind, please craft our motion to enter into closed.
Yes, you have before you a written form of resolution entitled Resolution of the Planning Board of the Township of Sparta Authorizing a Close or Executive Session. And any member could make a motion, and it lists the three items, and it is clear what it provides for. And you could make a mo-- any party can make a motion, and a second, and then a roll call and adoption of that resolution.
I'll make a motion that we move into executive session.
I'll second it.
Councilman Dean Blumetti.
Yes.
Jeanette Burke.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ron Day.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar.
Yes.
Bill Enright.
Yes.
Justin Canales.
Yes.
Angela Cassie.
Yes.
Chairwoman Celeste Luciano.
Yes.
Ernest Reigstad.
Yes.
Okay, we're good. Go ahead.
Okay.
I make a motion.
I like that.
I'll second.
Okay, motion to go back and open from Ernie and Jeanette is seconding.
Councilman Dean Blumetti.
Yes.
Jeanette Burke.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ron Day.
Yes.
Christine Dunbar.
Yes.
Bill Enright.
Yes.
Justin Canales.
Yes.
Angela Cassi.
Yes.
Chairwoman Les Luciano.
Yes.
And Ernie Reisert.
Yes.
Okay, we are back in open and I apologize to everyone from the public, but we need to take a five-minute break. We'll be back at nine thirty. What is it?
Nine forty.
Nine.
Nine forty.
Nine forty, yeah. Number seven oh nine, Alora Wellness Drip Spa, Patricia Rivas, 25 Center Street, block two two zero seven, lot seventeen, unit four, site plan. You can begin at any point.
Okay, good evening. My name's William Haggerty. I'm a member of the firm of Dolan and Dolan in Newton and I'm here on behalf of the applicant this evening. And the applicant is a prospective, is a tenant of a portion of the commercial building. It was the Sparta Theater located at twenty-five Center Street and it's block two oh two seven, lot seventeen. It's in the town center commercial zone. My client would like to open a wellness spa in unit number four of that building. It's a small portion of the building. There would be no exterior changes to the building or the site. The proposal that we have was initially presented as an application for site plan waiver, but we were directed to come to the board to provide more specific information in regard to the nature of the proposed business. With that, I'd like to present as exhibit A one, a business plan, and as exhibit A two, a floor plan, which I think will help the board members understand just what it is we're trying to achieve.
Thank you, Mr. Haggerty. I swear in your client.
Okay, sure.
Stand up and raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
And please state your name.
Patricia Rivas.
Thank you, Patricia. Please go ahead, Bill, and ask any questions you'd like.
Patricia, how are you affiliated with Alora Wellness Drip Spa?
I'm the owner.
And what is Alora Wellness Drip Spa to be? What are you supposing, proposing to do there?
So we're going to be offering treatments from facials to body sculpting, more like a wellness approach to health. It's nothing medical about it. It's all treatments. There are going to be performed facials, laser hair removal. We are going to offer some IV infusion.
Let's talk about that a little bit with the IV infusions. What specifically is done for an IV infusion?
So it's really comes prepared on a box from Liquid Vida, which is the company who already put everything together. And so the nurse, which is, let's say, the client wants, "I feel tired, need a vitamin C," or "I feel like, you know, I'm aging, I need something to boost my body." So that kind of B twelve or vitamin C, or they like to have some more like a hydration.
Okay, so in the IV treatment, it would be vitamins and saline, saline solution?
Yes.
Would there be anything other than that?
No, that's it. So it's aspirated from the bottle, which is already one dose of vitamin C that is already comes prepared with the vitamin C. So and then so the nurse aspirated from the bottle and it puts on the, on the solution bag. And so preps the bag and brings it out to the lounge area. So she can be sitting in there, which we show on the plans, those chairs are the chairs that they can sit there and receive the infusion. It takes about thirty minutes, sometimes twenty-five to thirty minutes.
Okay, let's talk about the day-to-day operation that you propose to have. How many employees would you have there at any given time?
So it's one receptionist and one person performing the service.
And what is the training of the person providing the service?
So the, if a client was coming in for an infusion, so it will be done by the nurse that we have and staff. It's if a client comes in for a skin regeneration or body sculpting or any of those kind of procedures, or waxing, or eyebrow threading, or permanent makeup, it will be done only by estheticians. If the nurses have license to perform skincare, they will be able to perform those services too. However, it's done by the estheticians only, and they are all licensed in the state of New Jersey.
What is your background and training?
So I have a study aesthetics. I went for a esthetician and then I become a medical esthetician and then I became a nurse also, a registered nurse. And I've been performing aesthetics over about twenty years already. I opened two additional med spas. They've been in business, one is from fourteen years in Warwick, New York, and my biggest accomplice is Boon, New Jersey, and that's been open almost seven, over seventeen years.
And do you provide the same services at those facilities that you're proposed to perform here in Sparta?
So everything that we perform on both locations that they've been open for so many years are going to be mini-sectioned. This place is very tiny, so it will be just part of some of those services, like the ones that I mentioned on the proposal.
And would you be present at this facility as well as the other two facilities?
So I am always on all my facilities because I want to make sure everything runs tight.
So the most you would have at this facility at any given time, you've got your receptionist, you have a nurse or a technician, and how many clients would you have there at any given time?
So because it's a very customized little boutique spa in Sparta, med spa, it's just going to be probably one to two clients per hour.
And do you generally book that on a half hour or some other schedule when you have a client coming?
So usually they are either booked between thirty to forty-five minutes.
And are these by appointment?
Only, yes.
Only by appointment?
Yes.
Okay.
So we don't want to take walk-ins at all.
And what part, how would you have parking spaces allocated to your use?
So whatever parks that we, they are front of the spa, we'll probably use that, you know, that's what we'll be using. So.
There's not specific dedicated spaces to the spa. You have spaces in common with the other tenants in the building?
Exactly, yes.
Is that right?
So, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And that's been reviewed, the site plan approval for the building in the past?
Right. I don't think we'll be drawing any crazy amount of traffic to that. So, yeah.
In addition, you'd have some retail sale of products there, is that right?
So I'm also a developer of my own skincare line. So Ayubera by Alora, it's my main branding skincare line, which I'm very proud of it. And so I like to focus on all the natural ingredients. So I will be selling a lot of my products because they already sells online. And so, and my clients love it. So it will be a huge selection of skincare.
Now, with the, I'm going to go back a little bit. With the infusions, do you have referrals from physicians in that regard? Or how do the people come in, the clients come in for an infusion? How do they find you and arrange that for that treatment?
So, okay, so I either go to the doctor and my doctor says, "Hey, you know, I'm feeling tired. I don't know what it is." So he does a whole blood work or something and he'll be like, "Hey, you know, maybe you should look in some kind of wellness," you know, like, you know, "Some I heard some of the spas offer infusions now. It's a very common procedure and this town does it a lot already. So it's not any difference." So they'll come to us and be like, "Hey, my doctor says vitamin C, I'm low. Can I get like an IV?" And so we're like, "Okay, sure." Some of the clients probably will prefer, you know, depends how you like to get it done at home. So my nurse can go home at your house and get it done too.
You would provide that service as well?
So you have an option to do that. That's for the special, you know, people too, yes.
We had a series of questions that were presented and you provided answers to those. Perhaps we should go through those for all of the board members because this is a subcommittee. And one of the questions was, are there any New Jersey regulations unique to IV therapy? Are there any particular requirements, training, et cetera, that you require to provide this service?
So all the nurses, they must have experience on how to put IVs. And we all know that all nurses do get that training. So that's their specialty. So yes, they will need to have certification. And what was the other question?
Okay, and any particular regulations? You said that they're all nurses at least do have that.
Yes. So in order to have a skincare shop and, or any type of service, you have to have a shop from the state of New Jersey license in order to be able to perform. So after we do get this zoning approved, we need to call the board and we need we need to call the board, and we need to also go through them to approve our spa.
Does a client need a doctor's script in order to undergo the infusion?
Absolutely not.
And, let me see if there's good questions here. Any adverse consequences from infusions with, for people with certain medical conditions?
So, you know, we all know that any type of treatments, they come with some kind of, you know, complications or reactions. So, but we are not treating patients that they are ill, illness. With any illness, we're treating patients that are fit, and they are also looking to look better and feel better. So, it's more like a, a wellness approach.
And this, again, the content of an infusion is vitamins and saline solution?
That's all it is.
Okay. Is there any waste product produced from the business?
So, we do have the needle that you use to syringe it to aspirate that. And the, even the, the, the intravenous that goes in, it's not even actually made out of a needle. It's actually made out of, like, some kind of fiber. And so, there is a sharp container that owned by the Sharp Company that it comes and pick up the waste on a, either a monthly or you could do it weekly, however you like to. And they have a special box to put everything away. So, and they'll pick it up, the waste material.
And, and that's what you do with your other facilities?
That's what I do with my other facilities.
You have a contract with the provider?
Yes.
And you have a, a secure area where those?
Mm-hmm, yep.
And where would that secure area be?
So, we do make like, there is a closet that will have the box in there that is locked. So, whenever the containers are full, we'll put them in that box, and then the waste company comes and get it, yeah.
What would the hours of operation be?
So, we'll have like a specialty hour. So, we'll probably open from Tuesday through Friday. It will be just like, on the beginning, 10 to 6:00, or sometimes will be 9:30 to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday or so, if we do open the weekends. But it's totally.
You kind, you kind of expanded as we talked.
So, like, let's sometimes, let's say, we do open Tuesday, we'll open Wednesday, we'll open Thursday, we might close Friday, but we open on Saturday. So, we're not gonna be open more than five days.
Five days a week, okay. And no later than?
No, no later than that, so.
No later than 6:00?
Yeah, a lot of the nurses don't like to work past later hours.
Okay.
So, and I don't think anybody from Sparta wanna go there later on. You wanna get your vitamins in the morning if you're really doing infusion.
All right.
Yes.
Now, with that, we have to cover. The other services that you provide, I'm just gonna walk through those quickly. You have skin rejuvenation, what is that?
So, that's all facial treatments, like skin regeneration, like, you know, facial, skin tightening, peels, exfoliation. You know, we do use machines for that. We'll have some machines for that, microneedling, you know, of those kind of sources.
Body sculpting, same thing?
So, body sculpting is either cryo. We'll use a placement of a cryo that it will remove fat from areas of the body that you don't like. And then, we'll possibly might have, you know, the M-Scope to make apps for you and things like that.
And the laser hair removal, I think that's fairly self-evident?
Yeah.
Yeah. Permanent makeup?
So, permanent makeup, I'm board certified with the state of New Jersey. So, yes, I do permanent makeup. So, I'll be offering eyebrows sculpting, eyeliner, lip liner, things like that. I have it, so it's great, looks good.
And lymphatic massage?
So, lymphatic massage is my main source of like, uh, cos- cosmetic procedures. A lot of my clients work with me regarding sculpting after liposuction, or they have a lot of massed away that they wanna move. So, I do use various techniques through my aesthetics of years to sculpt and give that silhouette that everybody's looking for.
Like eyelash extensions and wax are probably self-evident. Eyebrow threading, people are familiar with that. And then, the retail sale of your own products.
Yes.
So, those are the services that you would provide. Is there any signage that you're asking the board to approve?
I'm okay with the posters. I think they're cool. I can change them every season, you know, I can put a new poster up, you know, on the wall.
When you say poster, the posters inside on the wall?
Like, they have decal window, yeah.
On the door, the entry door?
Yeah, the decal window, so.
Just to identify your business?
Yeah, that's it.
But there's no street signage?
No, I'm cool with that, no strict sign. I don't need a sign.
Okay. And most of the business that you get is, is referrals, is that how?
It's actually, yeah. Alora is all referrals. And a lot of these clients in this town, actually, they, I reach out to me and say, "You need to come, because we really love your service, and we have our girlfriends here, they wanna come to you, but they don't wanna leave the town, you know how they are." And I said, "Okay, so I'll check it out." I said, "I'll give it a chance." I'm really well-known about aesthetics. I've been doing aesthetics for that many years. And so, I only offer the newest technology and also, I continue educations. And the new services that are in the near future are coming.
So, some of the clients that you have come to your Booton facility and your Warwick facility are from Sparta, though?
They are from Sparta, yes. They don't like to come in Boon, because there is no parking, they said, so.
Board members have any questions?
I have, I have a question.
Yeah, I have a few.
Yeah. Do you want?
Nope.
Go ahead. Okay. All right, thank you. But first of all, I just wanted to clarify. Maybe you could help, help me clarify, maybe Mr. Collins or... Is this, to me, when you're talking about an IV, sounds more like a health facility than a wellness facility? Well, it sounds like both, wellness but health, because you're talking about an IV being administered. So, I, I, when I read through the permitted uses for the TCC, I did not see health mentioned in any of the permitted uses. Retail stores, but no, no mention to healths. Could somebody help me with this?
Under 18 dash 4.24, which is the TCC zone requirements, under B, the principal permitted use is number two, banks and offices for business, executive and professional purposes, it's considered a professional office. And under the definition for professional office includes medical office.
The medical offices, okay. So, my concern, just continuing, is for the safety of administration of the IV treatments to our residents. And my first question would be, are the IV nutrition treatments FDA-approved?
Of course. Yes, they are.
Okay, so. I was not able to find that response when I did research.
You know, it's, it's just because, um, it is a very, how do you say? Vitamins, there's a lot of people take vitamins, right? But the body, it's not absorbing. So, an infusion, it's, it's, it's straight to your blood. So, definitely, you're gonna get better benefits. I do them, and I have to say, i- i- it really has helped with overall the way I feel, you know, and health-wise. Like, you know, your body aches, you, you feel tired, you feel, you, you feel all this. So, because I've been doing infusion, I'm a 50-years-old woman. I can tell you, it stops the clock, because you get that fuel that you need. We work like horses, and we always go, go, go. But if you take that 20, 30 minutes of that moment, you just recovered 10 years of pain and stress, you feel phenomenal. So, it sounds like, you know, a, like a concerning, or is it like a health? It's actually a totally different, it's a new way, the way medicine on a, being approached right now when it comes to vitamins. And so, some people like it, some people don't like it. And it's actually more for those that they are like, like they like to workout, people that are in sport and things like that. So, it's not, like, it's not so, like, say, it's, it's a health medicine. It's not gonna cure anything. It's, it's almost more like another way to say, "I'm getting a facial, but it's intravenous facial, but it's a vitamin that you're getting into your body."
Okay.
That's pretty much what it is. I don't know how to explain it more than that.
Yeah. Well, I've always been taught and taught that, you know, a lot of the vitamins just wash right out of your body if, if you don't need them.
That's exactly. So, but, you know, that little percentage, it gets to this. You feel different when you do an infusion. You feel like, I don't know, like more fluffy, like you, you feel youthful. That's all I can tell.
And you've been doing this at your facilities for how many years?
Um, so, I've been doing infusions for two years. And I'll tell you something, if you ever get a wound, you got like, like a clot, and it's not healing, and you go to the doctor and they give you this, you go get one infusion, you will be healed within three days. It works. Because I had a wound on my buttocks, and that I had a pocket. And I said, "I, I, I need to go to work. And I can't be sitting here trying to wait for this to cure on his own." Within three days, I was up and running, and my, my, my wound, it was healing. So, it's a nice way to approach the new stuff.
Yeah, I can tell you're really enthusiastic about it.
Oh, I'm really enthusiastic about the beauty stuff, I, I mean.
But anyway, I was not doing a little bit of research. I was not, I did not find out that they were FDA-approved. And I had researched places such as the Mayo Clinic and, and other resources. But I'll take your word for it. What does, another question, what does the Sussex County Health Department say about IV nutrition treatments? Do they provide any guidelines for that, where they should be administered? And who should administer them?
Um, so, they have to be administered by a nurse or like a doctor, or somebody who has a medical license. So, that's why, so from here, we'll go and we'll go to the state board. And then, we'll get the state board, and then the state board comes in and fixes the shop. So, they're gonna need to see the li- my license. They're gonna need to see the esteti- the, all the estheticians that are gonna be working license, and they're gonna need to see the nurse's license. And they're gonna need to see the doctor license, the medical director who works with me. So, we're gonna need to have all those licenses in order to get, be able to get our shop license.
Okay.
So, it's a process when it comes to this stuff. So, yeah, you will, i- i- it's being taken care of from the state of New Jersey. We have to go through the state of New Jersey in order to get the other shop open.
Right. So, we have to be very careful, and you've just pointed that out. Because from what I have read is that treatments, these treatments do provide a risk. It might be a minimal risk after you go through all the certifications, but especially to people who have heart conditions or kidney conditions, because they can, they can interfere with an electrolyte balance. They, if you give too much potassium, this can lead to a heart attack. You can have a fluid overload that can lead to hematoma, blood leaks, and trouble breathing. And other risks that I found are, like you said, you screen for allergic reactions. There's those. There's blood clot, there's infection, there's injury to skin and tissue. These are mentioned explicitly by Cleveland Clinic, other health online resources, the Mayo Clinic.
Have you had any incidents in any of your?
So, there is a risk, okay, involved with this, wherever you administer it. And I believe that it's true that traditionally, IV treatments of all sorts, nutrition or medical, are administered in a hospital setting to people who have medical conditions or a disorder that would lead to specifically why they have these is, is that this lead, they have problems with digesting things. And so, they're given to them intravenously because their, their digestive system is not absorbing very well. I'm not quite finished. Curious if IV nutrition infusion has been scientifically proven to be effective in any way, could you please provide a reference? Because I was not, after doing extensive research, could not find a reference anywhere that they are effective, okay? I'm not saying that they're not as effective for you or for some people, but I, but I could not find it online, okay? So, with the risks that I just mentioned, another question just came to my mind, and that is, is that if there were complications at the theater center, would there be access for an ambulance in that type of setting that could help somebody get wheeled out and taken to the hospital?
Of course.
So, so that's, that's, those are my concerns. It's for the safety of residents and safety of the process, okay? And there was just a recent article pu- published by the Washington Post, "Trendy IV Vitamin Infusions Don't Work and Might Be Unsafe."
So, yeah, so, just like anything else, let's talk about an example here, okay? This is just an example. Who's sculpting? Woo, right? Is the high, everybody's getting done. Then we get this fucking model, and she says, "I got lumps everywhere." So, now the machine is, okay, so this treatment is not good anymore. But guess what? People are still getting done. And not yet, I done probably close to a million body sculptings, okay, in my 17 years. Not yet, I seen what I heard about the who's sculpting. Okay, so, what you just read, it might be true about it, but can I tell you, I'm so sorry, I had to disagree with you. You go get a liposuction, they're gonna tell you you're gonna die. You're gonna get a heart surgery, they're gonna tell you you're gonna die. So, none of that, it's believable. I'm sorry. And I understand that you're very concerned about the whole community. We're not looking to kill people. We're looking to improve and help the way they feel, because they're asking for it, not because they are gonna be on risk. I am not here to risk my branding name or risk my name, okay? So, when I retire, I want my name to be known, because I believe in aesthetics the best only. Not, we're not having unprofessional people. We're having professional people. And our business is not gonna be all infusion. So, let's get that correct. We are offering other procedures that, that we do offer, which is the aesthetics part. So, if somebody wants infusion, we'll check it. Are you a healthy person? We're not treating people, there are underlying conditions, like you mentioned on your article, you know, that you just read.
When you screen for underlying conditions, how do you screen for that? Do you have a question?
We have forms. They have to fill out the forms. You have to make sure it tells you, you have to describe your physical. You have to tell us where you are. If you do not tell us, what do you have, then we will not know. You need to, if you are a person with an underlying condition, you need to have a doctor's note. And then, my doctor needs to approve it, if we won't do that. So, we only, our main focus to carry is to serve consumers that are seeking anti-aging remedies. This is what it is, is anti-aging remedy, stopping the clock.
And have you had any incidents with, you've been in business for years at these facilities. Has there been any incident, a problem of the nature that was just discussed at any of the facilities with adverse reaction?
No. I would look old if I did, see that all the time, 'cause I would be stressed out.
I, I, I can't discuss an article from the Washington Post. Some of these articles tend to be fairly sensational in newspapers.
How about this? Competition, competition. It's all about, because somebody else is trying to bring another stuff to the market. So, they're trying to suppress vitamin, you know, let's bring something else.
But, but papers sell because of sensational articles.
Of course.
And, and so, I can't really discuss that. I digress, but I had an application.
Let's bring it back to the actual application, and let's, let's take the supplication out of it, because we can talk about that at, at a great length. So, what I'm hearing you say is that you do, in fact, have a screening process, a medical screening process, that your potential clients A medical screening process that your potential clients fill out their forms. Those forms go to your doctor to review, your doctor reviews them and gives the yes or no. As to whether or not we're we're going to to service this particular client, is is that what I've heard you say?
That's right.
Okay, um now for anyone who does have an underlying medical condition and or history. What I've heard you say is, or what I think I've heard you say, is that um they have to bring additional information. From their doctor, um whether it be a heart condition from their cardiologist. Whether it be they have a dermal- dermatological condition from their dermatologist, so on and so forth, that comes back to them and says, this is the condition I have. Um, I understand that by doing this procedure, it could potentially exacerbate this condition. Then I'm assuming that there's some form of legal waiver of so on and so forth that they would have to sign, should they choose to continue with the process. Is is that correct?
That's what I mean, yeah, they had to sign the waiver and they had to make sure, you know, because if you are gonna be doing. Anything, again, let's say you are uh got a um diabetes and you wanted to do properties, right? So we need to make sure if this is gonna work for you, because you can do this treatment and not do anything to you. But you know what I mean, not see result, you're spending money, so that's another thing, so they, it comes to that, we have to follow your. Read your body, see if you need it, see if the doctor approved that you can receive this procedure. But we've not seeking from those clients, so we definitely, and most of those clients that they have underlying condition. They know they can't get these treatments done.
Um, because at some point you you have to assume that that your client is is coming for services either. Fully informed of of what it is.
Yeah, and and a lot of the people with the new technology, TikTok and Instagram. They sit there and watch all these videos and they, oh, their girlfriend got it on, you know? But they'll say, oh, my girlfriend has cancer, you know, she can't get the the infusion because, you know, there's gotta be something, right? So she won't be able, they already know the fact of it, they already know, and for the ones that they they might be sick. And they trying to reminisce with us, I always say, you know what, you, if you have. You you can tell when somebody is not look healthy, okay, because I will evaluate your skin, I will evaluate. I can tell when somebody has sufficient vitamin D or or they they look gray or they just got something going on with themselves. I say, you know, have you done any blood work, could you stick to your uh to your doctor?
That was my next question, is is there a way for a potential client who doesn't have that that information to provide to you? To schedule an appointment with your doctor, to be capable of getting that information on hand. So that you can clearly see what's what's needed and what's not, because the problem is sometimes uh an individual. Does go to a doctor and doesn't necessarily get um the actual vitamin panel for that blood work. But there's an assumption that they're, because they're fatigued, they require vitamin B, when in fact they need iron. Um, that's, you know, is is there a way for them to be capable of scheduling appointments with your doctors?
We do have this called home kit, okay? And that home kit, you have, it's a vitamin, you have to take it home, prick on your finger. Send it to the lab, the lab is gonna come back with the uh um. Vitamins telling you this is what you are sufficient, bring this to your doctor, see if you get an approval. You can start your infusion with us, yes.
Okay, um, next question, uh moving past the IV infusion. So you had mentioned that you um are also going to be selling your skincare line from your from your facility. Um, I know you had said that your other services are by appointment only, are you anticipating walk-in service for your retail?
So for the re- um for the retail, um if we are open, we will. Um, you know, take those clients to buy the products, but if we are closed, they can just go online and purchase.
The only reason I'm asking is because that that leans into how many potential individuals could be in the space at any one given time. How many parking spaces might be required, what the shared agreement is, that that's the reason why I'm asking the questions, to see whether or not. Um, there's there's any any more volume there um than than what we're what we're already discussing in terms of appointments and staff.
Right, yeah.
What's your experience in your other facilities, you sell retail products in the other facilities?
I do, when I sell it, it's like, you know, a client is coming in for a service and they will buy the product.
That's your, that's your typical experience, is that you you're not necessarily getting walk-in service to pick up something.
Even like, you know, we are at the boon in boon, we have a main street location. Very, like I said, maybe one person is trying to walk in to get a gift card, but because now technology is so cool. That people just buy gift cards online now in most of the products, it's everything online, even the booking. I mean, eventually we're even gonna have a receptionist, because everything is I I, I, you know, everything is done by the. Roblox now, so they don't even need to come to work anymore.
Um, next question, uh so you had talked about body sculpting, um so are your body sculpting services limited? To the cooling properties or are you talking about potential liposuction, things like that?
Oh, so I never like anything invasive, so no liposuction, so when I meant uh sculpting. I will use a machine and I'll use my hands to sculpt. Because I specialize in body draining, body massage, body uh moldities, you know, sculpting, moving cellulite. Getting those legs longer, you know, we use um ultrasound or we use gravitation or we use. An FRS procedure or, you know, everything is, actually I even use wooden things to massage people. To break the cellulite.
Okay, uh last, last question that I think I have for you and then I'll pass to someone else. Um, when you're you're talking about facial services, do you utilize botox, any other types of of injectables? For for your facial services?
Um, we're not gonna be offering botox on there, um you know, maybe in the near future. But um our main thing is no botox.
Right, the reason for the question would be predicated on disposal, because we all know that that's that's a highly volatile um substance, so we.
Yeah, no, no botox, no botox.
Anything that that could potentially um be environmentally impactful, you know, across the board.
Yeah, no, 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 no botox at all, so no injectables, uh we're just gonna be doing, like I said, the the most uh uh needle. It's gonna be um the permanent makeup, you know, because we use.
Tattooing, yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty much what it is.
Okay, so your infusions are, are they a needleless system?
So the the gauge that goes in it, it's a fiber, it's not even a needle.
Uh, right, so it's a needleless system, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and those are all the questions that I have, is there anybody else in the day that has any other additional questions?
I have, yep, I have a few questions, uh thanks for being here, Ms. Rivas. So uh first question, I wanna drill down on the medical director a little bit, please.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Martinez, it shows in your business plan, a couple of questions, so first of all, is he currently, does he have a current active? Valid New Jersey medical license at this time? Okay, uh what does he do and what is he accountable for?
So his main job is to make sure our uh staff, nurses are compliant with the state of New Jersey. And they are licensed and also making sure that um that uh the clients are coming. That they have the paperwork and he gets every client that, let's say, a client comes for an infusion. He needs to approve it anyway, we have to uh fax it, email it to him, he signs it and he sends it back. He will review everything and he sends it back to the nurse and the nurse um starts the the treatment. Um, so his main role is a medical director to oversee what's, in a daily routine, what happens on the swab.
So where where is he physically located?
He's actually in New Jersey, he lives in Livingston, New Jersey.
Okay, so he's not on site, he's remote?
Not on site, no doctors of any type, they're not performing any procedure, they're not on the side, they all are doing. Uh, mobile, you know, yes.
Okay, uh how many hours per week will he, do you expect him to spend on this facility's activities?
Uh, has to be available from the hours that we are opening, let's say we open from ten in the morning to five o'clock. So he needs to be available at all that time, either they stay in New Jersey, walks in and they need to speak with him. Or we have a question, so we need to be able to speak with him, so he's always available the time that we are open.
Do you, do you expect daily interaction with him?
Um, so we do, we do talk to him daily, yes.
So, different question, what are your emergency response procedures in case a client has? Experiences an event or an issue?
So my main responsibility is to make sure that I will uh resolve whatever uh compliance. Uh, that service with clients or any type of a. One hundred percent I'm responsible for everything, from like, you know, who is doing the job, to what product is sold. To uh who is working or, you know, what's going on or who's coming or what's being sold. Or that, it's mm one hundred percent Patricia is responsible for that.
Have you had an emergency situation where you had to call for emergency services at any of your, either of your facilities?
I have never called any nine one one yet, but you'll never know, so hopefully never happens.
So, do you have documented procedures on handling situations like that? And is there any um staff training, required staff training that's um formalized or structured at this time?
So to your question, like, let's say, what do you mean, like, somebody has a problem and then we. So, yeah, they all have to have a CPR, they know how to do CPR, they know how to make sure, like, somebody is feeling, you know, they get scared to the needle and they pass out. Yes, they have to make sure um they they can be able to help that person so that they is not scared or uncomfortable. They are trained for that, the nurses.
I would feel more comfortable if there was documented emergency response.
Yeah.
Training guidelines written and formalized staff training.
We have under a file that they get, they get uh the training, they they have to have the the certification. They be able to, let's, you know, let's say I'm doing a treatment on a client and she feels like her sugar dropped. What is, you know, what is it mean, I'm not gonna call nine one, what I do first, I make sure I run and get a candy, get her ginger ale. And she's back to feeling better, because maybe she took too much Xanax when she got there, you know what I'm saying, I don't know. So she's feeling a little lightheaded or, so I make sure that, you know, that I able, and I also have those stuff in there. Like I always have like pretzel, I have like, you know, things that will help people to get the energy back. Because you never know if somebody can get a little lightheaded, you know, so, yeah.
Or worse, you never know, uh and when emergencies arise, it's really important to have a clear accountability, responsibility, guidelines on how to handle it.
Well, for sure, yes, but when it comes to the the this beauty industry, you really don't see that kind of. You see more like laughing, the music is happy, everything is pretty, you know, we don't really get through the whole. That side, so we really don't want people passing out, because then you get the other ones that will be like, oh my God, what's going on here?
How how long is an IV typically in a client's arm?
Maximal, twenty minutes to twenty-five minutes. So you should be able to be out of there within like thirty-five minutes, you know, get in checkout, clean and go.
Okay, a couple of questions, any hazardous wastes?
Yes, so it's the the aspirating the product from the bottle to put into the saline water. That they, it comes, uh is that needle with the syringe and we put that on the waste container.
And that's picked up periodically per contract?
That's right.
Okay, is that, you mentioned sharps before, is this a separate container stored separately?
They they call it sharp container, that's what they call it, so it's already sealed, you just open up tip, throw the needle, you can even stick your hand in there. And you should also have that away from like the public, you know, so it's in a safe place that you um.
And that's what you do?
That's what we do, we don't want any needles running around, so you know.
Any other chemicals?
So chemicals, um we're not using any chemicals, we use everything, you know, from hyaluronic acid, creams, you know. Peels and things like that, but no, no chemicals that affect in the environment that we're living, no.
And those are all being disposed of now?
Um, so creams, they come in in containers, you know, we usually, um they are professional and they're labeled, it says professional products. They are stored away on a white, a white cabinet, you know, and it says skincare products. So nobody touch that, only if you're doing a facial, you pull that stuff out, you know, yeah, so.
Are they being disposed in the trash?
They can't, in the garbage, it's it's just, you know, a plastic container, like, just like a cream that you use on your face at home, you know, except this ones, they're a little better. Because they got ingredients, they're a little stronger, you know, that's it.
Okay, and and we might get to this separately, but you mentioned around the question of signage about posters in the windows. And you do know that you know they count as signs and I'm not sure, I could be mistaken, I'm not sure I saw those specked out in your application. So if if that is the case, you may need to come back um in terms of the size and coverage of the windows and all of that to the um site plan waiver subcommittee at some point.
Submitted everything on the application with those decals, so they're very aware with that, the size they are. They're just like this Fat Diva, the same posters that they have there, this is same things that we're using. You know, I don't really wanna spend five thousand dollars on a sign up front of the thing in there, so.
Posters are absolutely fine, just we need to make sure that they don't cover too much of the glass and the windows and that the visibility is.
Yeah, we want that light coming in, we want the light coming in, so, yeah, no, they're just, you know, medium size, yes.
I have one follow-up question, um regarding sanitation, um and and your cleanup process. After after your infusion or or your um your tattoo services, because obviously there's there's blood involved. Um, so can you explain to us what your what your sanitation is after each of those procedures?
So we put everything on a tray and it has, everything has like a, like a sheet over the tray first. And that sheet is, that is gonna get thrown away, um most of the stuff is either. I mean, when it comes to permanent makeup, the disposable stuff is very little. So little of the makeup, you use tiny, and so the needle that is, comes off from the handpiece. It goes in a sharp container and whatever residues, it gets wrapped on the uh sterilization paper. And it gets tossed in the garbage with gloves, so.
Okay, and and this for for anything that's bloodstained for the infusion?
So, um, so everything that is removed, it goes into the sharp container, the bag that has the solution, that goes in the garbage. Because that's just a plastic bag that is not, not reci- you know, I'm sure it's a recycle or not. But I think mostly is on the garbage regular.
I'm I'm thinking more in terms of, you know, cotton that you have to utilize.
We don't use cotton.
Because then anything that, anything that's going to potentially retain blood, um you know, disposal of that. And then, of course, how do you clean up those areas after you provide a service, right? So what do you use, do you use bleach, do you use other cleaning solutions to to sanitize those areas?
So um because um we are, you know, a med spa, we order um already a container. That it has Mars- MRSA, treats all antivirus, coronavirus. So we wipe it and we're not using any any sheets, everything is disposable. It's a piece of paper that you put on the chair, once the client lay on it, we remove that sheet. We wipe it off with these, that sanitize, um very sanitational medical grade, which is used on all hospitals. And all med spas, so it's safe, there, I mean, it's like.
It just wants to make sure it's hospital grade.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I've I've got some questions, um. I guess the first question I have is when I look at the business plan, it's targeting uh an age group of eighteen or older. Is there any minimum age of someone that could walk in and request one of these infusions?
So you cannot get any infusion done if you're not, if you, if you're underage. You need to have your parents, you need to have your doctors uh note that you say you can get this thing done. Otherwise you can't get it done, so you have to be um adult, um you know, from eighteen. We're not getting eighteen years old getting infusion, so it starts from twenty-one up, so they're already adult people that can make decisions. They wanna receive treatments like this, first of all, it's not, you know, um it's not cheap at all, so. It's expensive treatment.
So let me make sure I'm clear on what I understood, so, so if somebody seventeen was to walk in and say, I'd like an infusion. Um, they would need parental permission?
You would need to have your.
Parent there with them or can they come in by themselves?
Uh, no, they're gonna have to be with their parents, yes. You have to be older. You have to be older to be.
Parent must accompany and approve anyone under eighteen?
Yeah, we, we do not, we, we don't even perform service on a younger, and most of parents, you know, to be honest, they always are with their kids, regardless if the kid doesn't want it, trust me, they always go.
So I'm hearing two things, and again, I just wanna make sure I've got it right. So, is it that you will only treat somebody eighteen and older, or that you'll do younger than eighteen if their parent accompany, accompanies them?
Like, again, like I just said before, you must have a doctor note if you wanna receive an infusion, and you need to have a parent with you, that you need to sign the forms.
Okay.
So we're not treating anybody underage.
That would be a, a condition that, that a parent must accompany anyone under, underage. So another question I have is, you know, when I look at some of these other services, I believe the Sussex County Health Department gets involved in reviewing these type of facilities. Will this particular facility require a Sussex County Health Department review?
I, I had contacted, I couldn't find any regulations on it, but if, if you need some kind of a letter or something like that, we can follow up.
That's, that's a big question for me, that I really need to have answered.
So here again, I just told you, it's regulated by the state of New Jersey, so they're the ones are required, the health part of it, they're the ones, because you have to have that.
I understand that, but there are some things in New Jersey with both the state and the county need to, need to look at and.
I, I've been living in this county, and I own a lot of this business before, I never heard such a thing, but however, he can check on that for you.
No, I, I did, and, and I was directed the same to the state, but if you want something more than, I shouldn't be testifying, but we did check that out.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to have checked with the county, if, if that's possible.
Um, what, how, how about yourself, checking yourself, maybe that would be very helpful, because it would be great to move forward, you know, with this situation, because we still need to in contact with the state board to be able to get a shop license for the place, you know, and that would be very helpful, thank you.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna be the one that's gonna check with, with the county, just, I'm gonna look for some help here on how to handle this one.
I guess Dory could ask the county to give a letter that no county approval is needed for this. I mean, possible that they would do that? The health officer is, you know, the department head, I believe. Maybe Bill could help Dory get that letter, you know, that's, yeah, they explain what the use is, but.
And that would be for, for all the services offered, not just for the, for the IV?
That's right.
I would, I would contact and offer this document.
All right, great, thank you. So another aspect that's somewhat new to me tonight is that the fact that there's going to be home services. So, the question I have then is for a medical waste protection, in terms of when someone's travels to the house, how do we know everything's being done properly there, and not being disposed of improperly?
So, that's up to the customer if he wants to get somebody at home, that we're not, I'm not advertising that I can do it at home, but I know some of the rich clients, they like to get in their own home, their own infusions, and this happens at all times. I have received it at my home, the nurse comes prepared already, so they are trained to have waste disposable with them, with themselves, you know what I mean? So, it's up to the client who wants to get it done, it's not something that I'm offering in this business anyway, so.
So the client would be responsible for the, the waste disposal if it's a service?
That's it, I don't think so, I think we will take that home, you know, we'll take it to or whatever, we have to dispose it ourselves, yeah. But that's an option, you know, somebody say, hey, you know, we're throwing a body, I wanna, my wedding, you know, I wanna get infusions, I wanna have energy, you know, so we'll offer, we'll be able to perform that service to them, if they want it, you know?
If they want.
Yeah, that's, that's an optional, you know?
So, so along with Councilman Blometty's concern, we're looking for safety procedures, there'd be safety procedures that talk about what happens in the shop, will there be similar safety procedures that says, and here's how we'll?
The same protocol that is being done at the spa, if my, my staff is, they are doing this procedure, then it will, they'll have to fill out the same form, they have to have the same discretion, they have to make sure that they got them, doctor, you know, all of that, that needs to be important to us, what are they doing it for, you know, some people do it for, like I said, for more of, you know, energy, feeling well, or they have a big party, and they're gonna be up all night, and they need energy, so they'll do an infusion.
Okay. You know, what I've heard of the testimony is, it's a very safe procedure, and there's no concerns, but I thought I also heard that all patients are required to sign a waiver, which I typically don't see happening when someone goes into a salon or a doctor's, did I mishear that?
So, you know.
Not the doctors I've attended.
No.
I always, I always.
I think you and I are saying the same thing, I thought I heard that the businesses requires patients to sign a waiver.
So I.
Is that correct or incorrect?
Right, you have to sign a waiver, I will not touch you, you must sign everything, check to check to check to from them, everything, so there's no one is being touched without signing, so then if you don't sign it, you don't get the treatment done.
And what does the waiver say?
The waiver says, we're not responsible for if you have a reaction to it, or will have, like, if you have a bruise from it, or, you know, all those comes with that procedure, yes.
Okay.
So if you have a reaction, go to the emergency room, I'll call your physician.
Okay, that answers, those are my questions, I'm, I'm not sure they all got answered, but those, those are my questions.
Any other questions from the dais?
No, I, if you could just remind me, where are your other spots?
So, I am in Warwick, New York, I've been there for fourteen years.
And then you said Booton?
In Booton, New Jersey, seventeen years, yes.
Any other questions from the dais? We will open it up to questions to the floor? Any questions from the public?
Or, or comments?
Or comment. Okay, I would say that that's clear, no? I think we can proceed.
Unless the board has something more to talk about, you could consider a motion to approve the minor site plan with the representations of the applicant here tonight as a condition, with the conditions that I heard, which were Dave and Catherine's reports, and also a condition that if they provide services, especially infusions for anyone under eighteen, they will be accompanied by a parent who must authorize the child to receive the treatment or service, and they must have a doctor's authorization or directive. They will properly dispose of all medical waste, even any medical waste recreated or generated as a result of home, a home service. They'll, the applicant will prepare written staff emergency and safety procedures and protocol, and give all staff training in them. The, or Planning Board Secretary, with the assistance of the applicant's attorney, Mr. Hagerty, will request that the county health department provide a written confirmation that the spa and all of its services, including the vitamin infusions or infusions, don't require county health department approval. And then we have standard conditions, and on the signage that, if it's, any signage that they do must conform with the sign ordinance, otherwise it'll be turned to the board for a variance for signage, and that's pretty standard.
That would just add, that includes posters.
Include, then it does include posters, but that's in the ordinance, so, the board had anything else that you could add now, or if we're ready, that could be a motion?
I think that included pretty much everything that we discussed.
I think we did mention no botox.
Yes, she, she offered no botox.
No botox.
Correct, no, no hazardous material, uh, yeah, no hazardous materials in that respect.
And this is contingent upon the state, state board approval?
Yes.
Sure. Yes, all of her testimony.
Yeah, we need to have the boards and come in and inspect the place and see if it's compliance, actually, to do the service, so that's another one.
I would also just add exactly what the applicant just referenced, that they will comply with all state requirements, state department of health requirements.
Yep.
Right.
But just to be clear, the, the posters, you just need to make sure that these are in compliance with the.
Those are the ones, yeah, these are the exactly.
Ordinances, they don't have sizes on them though, so just that's a follow-up, if they have to meet the ordinance.
I don't know if my assistant put the size on it, but I, I think she did on the previous application, but we can get that for you, what size they are.
Yeah, I mean, if they're compliant with the ordinance, you don't need to come back to this, but if they're not, then.
Yeah, we did follow exactly what the requirements were.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second it. I'm sorry, who made that second? Angela. Thank you, Angela. Councilwoman Dean Blometty?
Yes.
Jeanette Burke?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ron Day?
I'm, I'm still concerned with the home care, and understand that better, so I'm, I'm gonna abstain on this one.
Christine Dunbar?
Yes.
Bill Enright?
Yes.
Justin Canales?
Yes.
Angela Cassie?
Yes.
Chairwoman Les Luciano?
Yes.
Ernie Reichstetter?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Board members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. We appreciate you waiting, and, and we apologize for keeping you here so late.
No problem, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our next hearing for PB 710, Sparta Veterinary Associates and Urgent Care, 365 Houses Corner Road, blocks 1, 7, 001, Lot 1, Site Plan with Variance.
Madam Chairman, Dave Brady is covering for me, because this is a conflict that I have recused on.
Yes.
So I think I'll go home now, Mr., Madam Chairman, is that all right with you? Sorry that I get to leave earlier than you do, but.
That's fair.
Good night.
Thanks, Tom, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Night, Tom. Okay, I think we're ready to begin at any point.
Great, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Good evening, my name's Robert McBreyer, I'm an attorney with the law firm, Miss King, Price, Smith &amp; King, located in Sparta. We represent the applicant, Dr. Travis Cerf, licensed veterinarian, who is seated to my left. Also present with us this evening are the applicant's professionals, Jason Dunn, professional planner, Paul Ashworth, the licensed architect, and Owen Dykstra, professional engineer. By way of brief introduction, the applicant seeks preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a two-story, full-service veterinary hospital and related site improvements, including parking, lighting, landscaping, and septic system. The subject property is identified as block 17001, Lot 1, on the tax maps for the township, and is commonly known as 365 Houses Corner Road. It's situated at the intersection of Route 15 and Houses Corner Road. The subject property is located in the township's ED zone, because of the unique features and shape of the property, certain variances in design waivers are being requested, and will be explained in detail later. We received the various township technical review reports, and will address remaining questions and comments raised by your professionals during our presentation. We believe it would first be useful for the board to learn more about the general operations being proposed at the facility, and therefore, at this time, I would like to introduce the applicant, Dr. Travis Cerf, as a witness to provide testimony regarding those applications. Mr. Brady, do you want to swear on the witness?
Dr. Cerf, if you would raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And just so it's clear on the record, state your name and spell your last name and provide an address.
Travis Cerf, C E R F, my address is 33 Cheyenne Trail, Spartan Nutrition.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Cerf, how long have you been a resident of Sparta Township?
Just over a year now.
And can you describe to the board your profession?
I'm a veterinarian, I graduated from Cornell University in 2006, I went on to do emergency work for my first year in Fairfax, Virginia, came back to New Jersey in Bergen County, and worked there for eight years. In 2015, I ended up working emergency for advanced veterinary care under Dr. Emery. Shortly after his passing, a corporation pet vet bought the clinic, I stayed there for a year, I also met my wife there, who's a veterinary nurse, so we got married in that, in that time, and after a year of the corporate field, we decided to open our own practice, and we moved to Hamburg. So our current practice is the Veterinary Center of Hardeston, off 94 in Hamburg, we've been there for three years, we opened in 2020, so, in 2020, so it was six months after, after the pandemic, it was right in the middle of it, so we've been open for three years now.
And how long have you been practicing as a veterinarian in the state of New Jersey?
Eighteen years.
Okay, and can you describe for the board why you want to relocate your practice to Sparta Township?
So the site we have now is, it's a leasehold, it's about three thousand square feet, and I'm already outgrowing it, so I also want a freestanding building to have the potential to grow, but as the years go on here, I realize that a lot of my clients cannot find emergency care, or at least easily accessible emergency care in the county. So my wife and I, who love emergency, decided that we wanted to create our own hospital, not a leasehold, own our own hospital, and with the caveat being we're gonna have an urgent care, and so we thought Sparta is the perfect location, my wife grew up here, we also had two children in that short timeframe, so we have a two-year-old and a three-and-a-half-year-old. So, yeah, we decided that Sparta is the perfect location, and this location in particular, because it's on Route 15, is a perfect pipeline for Sussex County residents and the community to have accessible veterinary care.
Travis, were you able to perform the emergency care services at the prior location?
Our current location now is three thousand square feet with three exam rooms, so it's, it's not really conducive for emergency care. I'm already, we're, we have three full-time doctors and two part-time doctors, and, and we're growing. One of the other, one of the other issues in, in my business is, there's a, there's a big corporate takeover going on in veterinary medicine, so all the private practitioners are kinda getting pushed out, it's, it's following the medical field. So, and I think that is a big problem, so I, I do want a hospital where veterinarians and veterinary nurses, and especially clients, can come and have it as a privately owned business, without corporate involvement, I think that's important.
And Travis, can you describe briefly the types of services that you And Travis, can you describe briefly the types of services that you will provide?
Yeah, so this hospital is gonna be strictly surgical and medicine. I'm, I'm a big surgery guy. I use laser surgery, so I, I haven't used a scalpel blade in many years. So I can do really complex surgeries that other people can't do. Some of the, some of the surgeries include splenectomies, liver biopsies, intestinal surgery, gastroenteries, bloat surgery. I could do soft pallets in those brachial cephalic breeds, the French Bulldogs, English Bulldogs, with the, you know, the stenotic nares and the soft pallet, so they, they're having trouble breathing. I could use my CO2 laser and help those guys out. So it, that along with the medical aspect, and I'm very proficient in ultrasound, abdominal ultrasound, echocardiograms. So it's really both. And as this industry has changed, it's less and less a retail industry, it's more of a service industry at this point. And that's fine with me, because I like surgery, medicine. So, yeah, that was, that's it.
On a less medical service-related inquiry, at, at this point in time or in the future, do you envision doing any dog training as part of other services that you provide on site?
Yeah, one of my current employees is a dog trainer, and I, and I would like the potential for stuff like, you know, puppy kindergarten classes and things like that. And you'll, you'll see in the, the rendering, there's a second floor that's pretty open. So I was hoping that can be conference rooms, a conference room for veterinarians, offices for veterinarians, behavioral training, dog training.
And one of the questions that were raised in the reports, Travis, had to do with that second floor area. Do you have any intention of subleasing that space or any other space in the building to any third parties?
No.
Okay. Can you describe for the board any instances where an animal requires an overnight stay and how that will be monitored by employees?
So it is rare that I have an animal stay overnight, and it's typically something like a splenectomy, where, you know, I'm worried about pain, and really just general monitoring. So, so occasionally, we have a nurse stay over, or a doctor stay over if it's really critical. But most of my procedures are outpatient, and, and even some of the serious ones, like I can do outpatient procedures, just like they do in human medicine. With the technology we have now, there's, there's things like lidocaine that lasts for 72 hours. So, so for instance, we have a board-certified surgeon come in once a month, and he does orthopedics, so ACL surgeries and things like that. Those dogs get that surgery in the morning and they leave in the afternoon. And they don't feel any pain because, because of that, that lidocaine. So a lot, a lot of procedures now are outpatient.
So is it safe to say, or accurate to say, that any overnight animal stay will be associated with a procedure or the administration of veterinary care?
Correct.
Okay, so you do not intend to provide general overnight boarding, grooming, or kenneling to the public, is that correct?
Nope.
And can you explain to the board why it is important to maintain an appropriate level of lighting on site from dusk to dawn?
Yeah, it's, it's basically for after-hours employees. Most, most of my coworkers are, are female. It's just part of the industry, and, and I do, I am concerned with them. Even now, in my current location, just going outside, even if it's nine o'clock at night, if it's dark out. So, yeah, I think the lights are appropriate.
And, and so too, would it be for the security of your building, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and in terms of appointments, will you be accepting pre-scheduled appointments and walk-ins?
Yes.
And I assume that the walk-ins will be on an urgent care basis, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and what types of deliveries do you expect to receive at the facility?
We, we currently get Amazon and UPS pretty much daily, multiple times a day. We also, we get picked up our sharps, gets picked up once a month, I believe that's once a month. And laboratories, our, our blood work that goes out goes to two separate labs, and they pick up twice a day generally. And Abby Glenn will pick up twice a week, that's a crematorium, and they're in Lafayette. So, and they're all, and by the way, they're all, they're all vans. You know, they're, they're no big trucks, it's, it's...
That segues a little bit into how you will handle general refuse and animal waste?
Yeah, so really, it's, it's mostly sharps that we're worried about, everything else is typically garbage disposal.
And any regulated waste would be disposed of through contracted third parties?
Correct.
And can you describe what, if any, sales will be conducted at the facility?
Well, the only sales really are gonna be met, are prescription drugs, preventatives.
Okay, so you, you won't be conducting large-scale retail sales to the general public at that facility, correct?
No, it's not my business.
And, and more specifically, is it accurate to state that your products will be sold, will be focused sales to visitors requiring vet services, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no need for retail displays and the like in the public?
No, no, this is, no, this, you have, you have to be a patient of ours to buy anything, prescription.
In terms of hours and employees, can you describe for the board how many days a week that facility will be open?
So our goal is to be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. It's not uncommon for shifts in our, in our industry to be 12-hour shifts. So three 12-hour shifts would, would be an average for a full-time employee.
And can you describe the total number of employees that you'll have?
So, a me, a day. So the problem is the shifts are, you know, say, for instance, three days, three days, and then a weekend. The maximum, I calculated, would be four doctors and 12 support staff. That would be maximum per day, per shift, and so that would be 16.
So that'll, that describes the total number of employees that will be on site at any given time?
Max, that's max.
Okay. And where will your employees park?
So there's a side parking lot on the side of the building. It's basically, they're gonna be told to be parked as furthest away from the entrance as possible.
Yeah, and you'll direct them to do so?
Correct.
And based on that direction, do you believe there's any additional need for designated employee parking stalls?
No.
Okay, and based on your experience, do you believe that the 38 parking spaces provided in the plans are adequate for the facility at full capacity?
Yes, are they adequate?
By locating the sidewalk adjacent to the parking area, in your experience, will that provide any benefit to the visitors and their pets?
I think it will. And where I am currently, there's an offloading site, and it's sidewalk, it's concrete. And that's nice, because we have a gurney, so we bring a gurney out and get a dog onto the gurney and into the hospital without going through, you know, grass and rubble. So I, I find the sidewalk to be very helpful. It's also very helpful for dogs, that are older dogs that have trouble gripping, do way better on concrete than anything slippery.
So in your experience, it will provide visitors and their pets easier access to enter the facility, is that correct?
Yes.
And can you describe the steps you took to design the exterior look of the building?
Yeah, I mean, Architect Paul Ashworth over there did a great job, but I went and we designed over and over again, probably three times, with my wife. And, you know, so I, I live in the Sawmill area, so I take 15, it's embarrassing, I sell GPS my way sometimes, so I take 15 to White Lake Road. And so I pass this spot, Sparta Church, and the Houses Corner Road every day. And so for the past year, I've been cognizant and thinking about what it should look like, you know, comparative to North Village, and, you know, should it match, should I not? And I think the first renderings were kind of close to it, but my wife and I wanted something a little more individual, you know, a little bit...
But it was important to you as a professional to have an aesthetically pleasing professional building, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. A mod, a modern professional veterinary hospital. And one of the reasons is, well, I also want to attract veterinarians there.
And can you describe briefly for the board the form and function of your interior design layout?
Yeah, so that's really where I was. Paul and I worked closely with this. So my idea is to have an open floor plan, very transparent, so there's many exam rooms. And so the waiting room is, I don't know, it's, it could be smaller than this, but it's not that big, because there's seven exam rooms. So my idea is to get in, get into the exam rooms, and we could do everything in there, we could even check out clients in there. And, and the reason for that is because if you've ever been in a veterinary hospital, lobby can be crazy, right? It's like, you don't want to walk in with 100 dogs barking and fighting. You wanna, I want to get them into rooms and have quiet time. So when you see the layout, the, it's very open, but it's a lot, it's a lot of exam rooms and less of a waiting room. The surgery room is a bit oversized, but it's because I do a lot of surgery. Same thing with dental dentistry's, and the treatment room for, for the nurses to watch patients. There's not a lot of offices, or there's no retail. Most of our prescription drugs, by the way, are online at this point, and so I don't keep a lot. And as time goes on, I think that'll get less and, less and less, I think it'll be almost all online, so...
Thank you. That's all I have for directive of the witness at this time. Most of those questions, I hope you can appreciate. The genesis of those were from the reports that we received and reviewed with our client and our professionals, with the understanding that we have Jason Dunn, professional planner, and Paul Ashworth, licensed architect, to also provide technical testimony. If there are any general questions about operations from the board, we'll certainly entertain them.
I have one question, how many different types of animals are you, are you treating?
Good question. So currently, I'm, I'm treating dogs and cats, but when I was in Bergen County, I, I treated exotics as well. So for my clients that know me, I don't advertise it, but for clients that know me, I'll see their birds, I'll see their small mammals, so I'll, I'll see reptiles, I'll see everything. I don't do any large animal.
Any other questions from the day's for this witness?
Dr. Surf, did you purchase this property or leasing it from the owner?
Leasing it.
For how long?
You, you're talking about 365? Yeah, okay, or the, or the hospital that I'm in now. I'm leasing it.
For how long, is the lease term?
I think it's till January I will leave. The, the land is, is, it's, I think it's up in January, the lease.
The hospital you're at now?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, the hospital I'm at now...
I don't care about that one. 365 Houses Corner Road.
The land itself, yeah, it's, it's, well... Yeah, it's a purchase.
So you're purchasing the property?
Mm-hmm, oh, yes, yeah, that's my goal. I'm sorry, I thought you said if I purchased it now, I don't own it now, but yeah. First, I want to make sure I can build on it.
I understand.
Can you share a little more about the, the concept of the dog training and dog training space?
Yeah, so when you look at the upstairs, it's, it's wide open, and I'm sure my doctors are gonna want to use it for office space too. And we do a ton of continuing education, so that's where that space is most likely gonna be. But a lot of hospitals will do like, you know, Monday night, 8 o'clock, kindergarten class with puppies for clients, and so all the puppies go upstairs and do classes, and I think that's a good fit for that space. But, I mean, honestly, I, I think as, as time goes on, what I'm hoping is I'm gonna get veterinarians with special interests that I don't have. So for instance, my, a new graduate that I just hired, she wants to learn acupuncture, so I'm setting her to learn acupuncture, and then she'll come back and have that skill. And, and so if it's dog training, acupuncture, holistic, I'm open to everything. I just need a building to do it.
What is the, uh, different question, what is the purpose of the 15-foot by 15-foot patio in the back?
That may be an appropriate question for one of our professionals.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll certainly address that.
Okay. And just from, you mentioned you're purchasing this property. If I'm not mistaken, just for everyone's full disclosure, you're purchasing it from Mr. Dykstra? Right, okay, or his, one of the holding companies, okay. So Mr. Dykstra did the stormwater management engineering and environmental impact statement, is that correct?
The firm, Dykstra Associates did that. Two, two questions. When I look at the use, it, it talks about surgery for dog, cats, and exotics. Can you help me understand exotics?
Exotics, so for instance, I just did a guinea pig, broken scissors, had to drum them down a few days ago. But I've worked on, I work on birds all the time, macaws, small mammals, rabbits and chilis, guinea pigs, reptiles, a lot of reptiles. So, yeah, I did a lot in Bergen County with exotics. I just don't like to advertise.
So basically, small, small animals type, type things?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, perfect, okay. The other question I had was, is there any need for any outdoor use on the property in terms of what the services you're providing, or will everything be done within the building?
Most of everything is done within the building. Yeah, there's not much we do outside.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
My question is, is based on your, your design choices. You, you had said that you, you put a lot of thought into, into this particular design. And, and I know you were thinking about that with, with North Village in mind, but I'm gonna ask this question with North Village in mind. There's a lot of kickback in, in terms of, of the contemporary aesthetic and, and how, how that's changing the face of Sparta. How, how do you answer, how, what would be your response to that in, in terms of the, the particular design of, of this building? And, and how it, how it would fit into Sparta's aesthetic overall?
Madam Chairman, maybe we can have our professional architect...
I'm ju, I'm just looking for his opinion in terms of why he chose the design that he chose.
I actually, I think it has a nice mixture of, of, of a modern, like, almost like a modern farmhouse-type architecture. So I, I liked that there's wood involved. And so I, I do think it works. I think we had two renderings, but... I should have dragged my wife here. Because I just look in the inside and go, I can make this work.
Oh, you said, I, I, one more question, I just, I want to get this one out of the way. When I look at conditional uses, one of the condition uses lumps together funeral homes, healthcare, and veterinary hospitals. When I look at the economic zone, I don't see that as a, as a permissible conditional use. So can someone, I'm gonna look at our professionals, help me, how do I rationalize that?
Captain and I were talking about that before the meeting, Ron, I think she's got it covered.
Okay, good.
Sure, so, and I'll give a little background, when I was writing the, the memo, because I always double-check to make sure, you know, what's permitted in his zone or not, just to make sure that, you know, in my opinion, I can advise the board that it's within the jurisdiction of the planning board. And so similar to my response, Mrs. Dunbar, in the last application, I felt that this use was permitted under the principle of permitted uses... use was permitted under the principle of permitted uses for the ED zone as a professional office, which is in the definitions, the office, professional office is defined, it says including but not limited to architecture offices, medicine, dentistry, et cetera. And it says including but not limited to, which, you know, includes medicine and veterinary medicine is, you know, a medical use. And so I felt it was, it was permitted under that category and because of the definition supports that. As far as how veterinary use appears in the code, it is quite strange. And so at the beginning of this memo, like I said, I go and I look in the code to see if veterinary use appears anywhere, just in case. There's no definition for veterinary use. It doesn't appear under any zone as a permitted or conditional use, but under the conditional use standards, which are, they refer back to each of the zones and the different conditional uses that are allowed, there are conditions associated with funeral homes, healthcare facilities and veterinary uses all under one umbrella. And then they have some conditions. However, it's kind of what I'd call like an orphaned section in that it relates and references to literally nowhere else in the code, not even a definition for veterinary. And so while they may exist there, they have no applicability to the use here. As I mentioned, in no zone, including the ED zone, are veterinary uses listed as a conditional or otherwise permitted use. And therefore, like I said, it, it seems like it's just an orphaned section of the code. But I, in my opinion, and how I advised the board and how I did in my memo, is that this use is permitted, you know, based on professional office use in the ED zone being permitted use.
If I could plant it back, so it sounds like it may be related to something long ago that may have been removed and it doesn't really apply to the, to the zone.
Very possible, or the other way around. Maybe it was future, they thought there, it was going to be included in the code and so the standards were included there. It's, it could be either way, but yeah, now it's just this little orphaned section.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I'd like to go back to my question about design. So when, like I said, when, when you were, when you were envisioning this, like what, what were your basic thoughts in terms of aesthetic and how you, you thought that this particular building would fit in with Sparta's aesthetic overall?
Well, so a couple of things. I wanted, I wanted natural light. That's huge for dogs, specifically dogs. And, and for me, more importantly, quite frankly, was the inside. The floor plans is, was ninety-nine percent of what I did. Because I just care about what's going on with the flow, what's happening inside. But some of the key points were, we wanted it, you know, we don't want it to be an eyesore. It's on fifteen. We wanted, we wanted to show that, that it's modern, but it also has sort of a rustic feel. So we were trying to incorporate more wood. And there is the pylons. So it does have accents that I think give it that. But I think over time, it's that, that this will, this will hold up.
Well, I guess my next question is, so the, the image that I have, that, all of the wood that's, that's now in those images is, is black, with the image that I have, it's brown, so.
Oh, that might be the original ones?
Are you, are you going for black? Because that's a very contemporary.
That is not black.
I'm sorry, what is it? Oh, yeah.
Questions I really could be addressed by Paul.
If you wouldn't mind swearing him in, because that's a more technical question, then.
Why don't, why don't we wait, Madam Chair, till we have the architect up? He can talk about what the renderings look like and what the color choices are and things of that nature.
Okay, not a problem.
And when he comes up and talk about it, we'll mark him into evidence.
Paul, Paul spent a lot of time with my wife.
All right, any other questions of this witness?
I, I do have one. An operation standpoint, you mentioned about the hours being eight to eight. And you also mentioned safety of staff in reference to the lighting being on from past eight all the way till, till dawn. Can you talk more about that? Because it seems that if the building is closing at eight, what is, can you explain the need for the lighting overnight?
Yeah, so, so the building closes at eight, vacuum up, clean up, out by nine, hopefully. It's obviously going to be dark out then. The, the worry is, I think, is if sometimes we meet clients back at the hospital, it's very rare, but most of the time, it's, it's one of the nurses that's coming in from home to do an overnight shift because I did a splenectomy at lunch and that dog's not stable and wants to stay overnight. And, you know, if I offer to go to other emergency places and the clients say, no, I want you, I want her to stay here, then we have a nurse come. And so if that happens, I just don't want it to be dark. And, and I'm, I'm not sure if they make these, the lights now where you can set them and dim them, that, that's fine with me. I just don't want it to be dark.
Then we can certainly provide additional testimony from our professionals in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have one question, if it's open to the professionals. I'd kind of raised it in my memo and you kind of addressed it as far as the urgent care and walk-in situation. Is there any, this is hypothetical, but is there any chance that you'd be at capacity? Like, how do you determine if there's a walk-in and, and you don't have the capability, you know, in a certain timeframe? Would you send him to a different animal hospital?
Yeah. I guess it depends on, what do you mean by we did not have the capability?
Capacity, really, I mean, timing wise.
Right.
If it was an emergency and you had, every room was filled and you had people lined up, you know, would people jump the appointment line? If it was true emergency, would you send him elsewhere? That's.
Yeah, so it depends on what it is. When I, when we triage, we figure out if, if, if it's just someone coming in because the dog has an ear infection and they deem it an emergency and they want to wait four hours, that's fine with me. I don't need to call around the hospitals and figure out how fast they can get there. But if it's a hit by car or something that needs to be seen and it can't wait, then yes. But then, then of course, we're going to call because if you think about it, if you're right now here, dog got hit by a car, you're going to Newton and then after that, you're going to a different county. You're going to Morris County, you're going to Bergen County. You're driving far. So, so, I mean, it's a good point, but that distance, that forty-five minute drive, that hour drive is also something I got to take into consideration.
Absolutely. No, and I appreciate that.
But I would, I would, personally, I would call Newton and say, hey, you guys busy? You know, send them over.
No, I just was curious about a procedure. And you, that brings up a good point about, you know, the hypothetical you threw in there about if, if someone had a dog with an ear infection was willing to wait the four hours, you know, if it's slow day or something, absolutely.
Right.
But if you saw, you would send them home maybe and come back or set it, have them set up an appointment for later in the day or something like that, right?
Right, yeah, I don't, I, I don't want to give the impression that we're not a full-service veterinary hospital, because that's exactly what we are. The urgent care part is also just telling the public, hey, guys, we're here, seven days a week, eight AM to eight PM, you need something, we're here. And you could walk in, but it doesn't mean that we can't be your regular vet, because that's what, that's our bread and butter. That's who we are.
Yeah, and I just, I just want to clarify from a, more of a operations and how it feeds into impact, you know, parking spaces, traffic, et cetera.
Right.
Just want to make sure, it sounds like you've got it covered.
There's a lot of parking spaces.
I have a question, and it, this might be for the architect later, but it, it appears that there's sidewalk throughout the building. Is there an area for, when I take my dog to the vet, the first thing he wants to do is go to the bathroom? Especially because I think he smells other animals. Do you guys have that covered?
Like rat.
Yeah, I mean, you could probably.
Yeah, I'll wait.
Yeah.
Are we ready for our next witness?
Great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Board, at this time, I'd like to introduce Jason Dunn, professional planner, to describe the proposal in greater detail, including justification, precise plan of variance relief. Mr. Brady, if you could swear him in, or Jason's testified recently before this board. Do you want me to re-qualify him as a professional?
That's up to the board, Madam Chair. I've seen Jason before and he has been qualified in boards that I represent, but it's always up to the individual board whether they want, they want the qualifications on the record.
Does the board want to, want him to be re-qualified or are we okay with his credentials?
Seen him before and qualified him, you can simply say your record.
We can just swear.
Before we continue, Madam Chair, maybe for the public, we didn't open the doctor to questions from the public. I assume what we'll do is once we get all the testimony in, is open every.
I think right now, because of the time constraints, we might want to continue our process and then any questions that might be had, we'll, we'll.
At the end.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Jason, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, state your name, spell your last name and provide an address.
Oh, does this work?
Is it on?
Be that one?
My name is Jason Dunn, D U N N, eleven Lawrence Road, Newton, New Jersey. I'm with Dykstra Associates. All right, and my licenses are current, as of midnight. I have an exhibit here. It's a color rendered site plan titled presentation and dated eleven twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three. It's a, like I said, a color rendering of the site plan that was submitted to the board.
Let's mark that as A one oh one with today's date.
Is that one point oh one?
A one, one hundred and one.
Okay.
It's the same site plan with, that the board has, except that it's been colorized.
Yeah, colorized for ease of you guys to see where I'm pointing at as I go through that.
Is that a certain page number in the site plan set?
It's actually a conglomerate, conglomeration of a couple of things. So it's kind of standalone page one of one, but it shows the site plan layout, the, the surrounding roads, it shows some landscaping across the building. So if I may just get right into my testimony, first, I want to walk you through the site plan a little bit and the site. The property is currently undeveloped. It's, we show an aerial image in the environmental report, if you wanted to see that, you'll see it's just some pioneer vegetation and lawn. It was created as a result of the Route fifteen and Harza's Corner Road realignment project, which was around nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine. What that essentially did, the old Harza's Corner Road was aligned along our current rear property line and the intersection was changed. They, they built a bridge over the railroad. You may, some of you may remember all that. I barely do because I was a little busy back then, but in and out of college and whatnot. Nonetheless, when, when the road was realigned, they did not change the zone line. So that this particular property is in the ED zone and right next door is the church and school campus. I think it's known as Veritas Academy or Sparta Evangelical Church. That's right next door. It's a rather large property. Immediately behind our property is the existing drainage pond, which treats, which accepts storm drainage from the larger campus next door. We, we are not going to be connecting to that pond. Anyway, the, at that time, I believe that this smaller lot could have been taken with eminent domain, but they did not for some reason. So it's, it became a standalone lot in which half of the right of way was, was, when it was vacated, it was absorbed into this lot to make it the size that it is. It is undersized by about twenty percent, but the former lot before the realignment was like eighty-four thousand square feet. After the road construction, there was a site plan approved here. The applicant was Bill Wilson. It was five thousand seven hundred twenty square foot office with a thousand square foot of warehouse and garages, which would accept truck deliveries, thirty-two spaces. Variances approved were in some ways similar to this one, the front yard fifty-five, the distance to our zone was fifty-nine and the front yard parking setback for that former site plan was twenty-seven point four, where fifty's required. And looking at the resolution, I found that the end user was not known and no building plan or landscaping was submitted. That, that plan had an impervious coverage of thirty-nine percent. I just wanted to let the board know that, that there is a little bit of history with this site. For whatever reason, that project obviously was never built. Turning to the property and neighborhood, property is one and a half acres. It is shallow in depth and it is irregularly shaped, similar to a triangle. It is a corner lot. It's, as I said, in the ED zone. Other permitted uses, which could be on this lot with similar variances, would be storage and warehouse, office, manufacturing, outdoor storage, which would be associated with those uses. Conditional uses could be public utilities, kennels, accessory retail sales. And as I said, the surrounding properties, the nearest one is the school and soccer fields and the church. It's on the other two sides, it's the town road, Harza's Corner Road, the state highway Route fifteen. Across the street is, I would say, undeveloped and then the slope goes down and it's a railroad. It's across, across Harza's Corner Road. Across from Route fifteen is a detention area for NJ DOT and like a stormwater detention area. And I believe it goes up slope. There's really no buildings near this lot in that direction either. I should point out also that the Highlands boundary for the preservation and planning area also runs along the rear property line. This lot happens to be in the planning area, next door is in the preservation area. There is also an office on the church property. It looks kind of like it used to be a house, but they use it, I believe, as an office. That's about sixteen feet from the right of way. The proposed use of the building, we heard all about what's going to happen inside from, from the applicant. It's a veterinary hospital with care offices. A facility and operation statement was provided to the board, which goes into a little more detail about that. It will be a single, single owner and user. The space will not be leased to other people. Building would be two stories, seventy-two hundred four square feet total of the usable area. The footprint on the site is six thousand one hundred twenty-nine feet. The utility servicing the site would be individual septic to accommodate this use. This is in the jurisdiction of the county health department and it would be a field about twenty-five by sixty-three in the southeast corner of the site. It would be connected to public water through a water utility easement that runs along the rear property line. Power would likely come from a pole on Route fifteen, but that would be from the power company to decide that. And then for heating, there would be propane because there's no opportunity for natural gas hookup yet here, to my knowledge, anyway. So there would be a propane tank to the, to the east of the building. For parking and circulation, we have thirty-eight spaces. Two would be dedicated for EV credits, electric vehicle charging. So that equates to about forty spaces, to forty spaces by ordinance. Parking is located in the front and side of the building. There are two ADA spaces, two EV-ready spaces, one loading area, which is what is required by ordinance. One driveway from Harza's Corner Road, there's no access to Route fifteen. Traffic impact would be negligible as per the engineer studies provided in the facility report. This is a not, not really a large traffic generating use as, as compared to some of the others that could happen here. For parking coverage, there was a question in the reports about how that was calculated, I think. We had ten percent on our, on our zoning chart. We believe that's, that's the correct number. Looking at the definition of how, of a parking space, it's, it's the actual space where the cars are left, left for temporary storage, right? So that would really only mean the parking space. So that's, we believe our ten percent number is correct. Regardless, it's still under the, the acquired, acquired number. While we're on parking, I wanted to talk a little bit about the setbacks. There's a parking setback variance from the right of way, where fifty's required and due to the shallowness of the lot, we have, it's about hundred ninety, about hundred ninety-five feet from the, from the intersection boundary line to the rear. I wanted to point out that this line here is, is the property line. There's still lawn that's technically in the DOT and/or the town right of way. So it's like, it's a perceived setback, if you will, that, that would never be developed with anything that I can think of. So even though the boundary line is here, there is a perceived setback of approximately sixty feet from the pavement to where the, from pavement and the roadways to where the parking area starts. Another requirement in your zoning for parking is to have ninety-five percent, to have twenty-five percent of the parking in the front yard, due to the fact this is a corner lot. in the front yard, due to the fact this is a corner lot, and it would be very difficult, if not impractical, to put parking anywhere else. We have 95% of the parking is in the front yard. Again, this is a pretty unique situation, so I'll get into the planning testimony a little more later, but also related to parking, we have a couple design standard waivers that we're asking for, a nine-by, exception, nine-by, nine-by-18 parking stall size and sidewalk next to the parking. But other than those two, we are compliant. Parking is curved, it's paved, and it's, the dimensions are, the dimensions of the aisle widths are per your ordinance. For refuse management, I know I'm going through a lot of things, I'm trying to keep a good pace here, thank you. For refuse management, there is a trash enclosure 12 foot by 20 foot, enough for two, at least two dumpsters, probably only two is what he would need. Screened, that's going to be screened from view with fencing and evergreens to the rear of the property. The impervious cover is under 40% at 36.4. I know there was a discrepancy in the plan set, but it is 36.4. And the drainage system is surface throw, surface flow, two catch basins directed to piping, which discharges into an infiltration basin. A full engineering report was, was submitted with this and reviewed. I believe it complies with New Jersey stormwater management rules, and I think in Mr. Simmons' report, there are some comments, but we had put forth a letter yesterday that responded to those reports, and that was one of the things we would agree to straighten out if there was any, or work out if there's any issues with the drainage. There was also some questions about generator. We did, on the site plan, show this, this small rectangle next to the building would be a location for a generator. That was intended to be a future generator that we would, we would install after everything is built. We, we haven't determined what the, what the need for that is yet, so it's really, part of the site plan is a concrete pad for now, and then later we would submit for generator approval with zoning, with your zoning officer, and if there's any questions or variances needed for that, we'd have to come back. The LED lighting, LED lighting is the type of site lighting that would be used here. There's, I believe, two, two lighting poles that are 25 feet high, and the rest of the lighting is around the building wall mounted at 15 feet high. We talked about the hours. We're asking the board to give us, well, we're informing the board that we would like all night long, dusk to dawn lighting, but as Dr. Surf indicated, we would be willing to lower the lighting levels during certain hours if that's what was desired. My only concern with that is about lighting standards and safety, and if there was an accident or a trip and fall and, you know, is the lighting adequate, you know, that's, that's an issue, but we could talk more about that. We could decide, like, what level can be lowered to and still be acceptable, is what I'm saying. The landscaping, we show the landscape areas on the plan. There was some suggestions to show some more landscaping, which we would agree to. We do, for the most part, we want to do, we would agree to do foundation plantings where indicated, where in the reports. We'd have to move the, one of the sidewalks away from the building a little bit to accommodate that, which would be no problem. But as far as a trash enclosure goes, it does have fencing around it, and there is evergreens behind it, so I think there is some comments about adding more evergreen shrubs, which, which we could do if, if it makes a difference. Okay, that's all I have as far as the site, circulation, and where things are and how things are hooked up. Before I go on to the variances, are there any questions on the site?
I have one quick question. That little triangle on the top that doesn't belong to this, it's that extra parcel that you said was DOT or?
Here.
Yeah.
Yes.
What, what will that be, this grass or, and who will maintain that?
It will probably stay just the way it is, which is grass. DOT probably maintains that, but in all reality, it's probably in Dr. Surf's best interest to have his maintenance guys keep that neat.
Keep it nice.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, I have a question. I do, I do want to know what the patio is planned for, so it's the appropriate time?
You're right, I did not answer that. So behind, behind the building is what we were proposing, a brick, brick paver patio, simply for the use of the employees, if they want to go out and have lunch outside at picnic table. It's really not for, for visitors or patients, or the dogs to go out there, simply for the employees to have a break.
And is that screened from Route 15?
Yes, there's evergreen trees. We actually proposed juniperus virginiana, virginiana, which is known as red cedar around here. It's a natural growing pioneer species, so it's, it would screen that pretty well, yes.
The way the building, excuse me, the way the building is shown in this, yeah, picture over here?
It hasn't been admitted yet, but.
Oh.
The rendering hasn't been admitted to evidence.
Okay.
Wait for the architect.
Go ahead, ask the question about, because rendering was, I think, color rendering was submitted on one of the reports, so.
Which way, which way is the building facing?
Which way is the building facing? Great question. So this is, this is the front of the building. The main entrances would be right here, so the front would really, I'd say, be almost at a 45 angle, 45 degree angle, pointing toward the intersection.
Okay, so if you're coming from, you're driving north on 15, what would you see?
You would essentially see a lot of shrubs and plants and the rear of the building and the, the west side of the building.
Are there designs for the rear or the west side of the building?
Yes, I believe the architect did renderings of those as well, which we're going to go into when he is called.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to wait for the board to be done. Was any consideration given to putting the generator pad at the rear of the building rather than on the side?
I don't, I don't know.
There's just a lot, there's a lot going on over there as far as the propane tank, which I'm assuming is above ground, the refuse, and then the generator?
I think that's one of the reasons why the utility type things were placed on this side, because, yes, I know that residents will be coming to this intersection this way, they definitely will, if it were not screened well enough, they would see right in it, but the majority of the traffic and people wouldn't, wouldn't see this side.
Okay, and then I just wanted to note that in the response memo, it was noted that the loading space would be moved a little bit away from the refuse enclosure? So it's, on that plan, it's shown as it was submitted, and I just wanted to note that it was.
That's correct.
Brought up that the loading space would be moved away so that the refuse enclosure doors could be opened more unobstructedly.
Right. So there, there is, there is space to move it eight feet toward Houses Corner Road to accommodate that.
Thank you.
There was also a question, I don't, about where the dogs will leave themselves when they come onto the site? That would probably be in the area of the generator, too. There's, there's an area that would either be lawn or some other surface that would do that. There was also, a lot of places I've seen those stanchions that have refuse bags, and I'm sure Dr. Surf would try to enforce his patients to take the refuse bag and throw it away.
So I have a question on vehicles on 15 north that are stopped at that light or at the closest edge to the building and the parking lot. What will they see and how screened with vegetation will that be?
You can see like this brownish area here to the, to the west of the building. That's, that's meant to be planting area with some, you know, pretty decent sized shrubs. It, it's always a balance, and I don't want to totally screen the building because it's a beautiful building, but I do want it to have kind of a buffer, if you will, between the roadway and, and the building, so it's not just, so it doesn't look like it's just rising out of the ground with nothing around it. So we would blend the landscaping to help buffer that a little bit, yes.
And how, how would you describe the parking lot that, right next to that, closest to 15 there?
Yes, this area here is one of the, one of the areas that the, your board professionals suggested we added some screening there, and another suggestion was to have some evergreen shrubs along this, this piece that faces the intersection, so it wouldn't just be deciduous shrubs, it'd be something all year round to help buffer that, the headlights and the view of the cars.
A more general question, so before this was designed, when you looked at the dimensions of the lot, how much consideration did you give to a smaller footprint, smaller building, smaller parking lots, that there would be a little bit more setback, a little bit more breathing room perhaps, and less need for variances?
What I can do is, that's going to be the next thing I'm going to go over, is some of the justifications for the variances. I think that'll cover those.
Okay.
So I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to, hold on one second.
Okay, and one last thing on, then, on that note. The generator, I know you said later on you'll come back, is it plant, are there plans to screen it right now or it's, it's all TBD?
There, there's no screening shown around the generator, like immediately around the generator. I know there's some distance, separation distance that needs to happen between the shrubs and the generator, if we put anything around it, but if you, if you look at the, the landscaping that's along the sidewalk and between the parking area and the generator, I think it'll be pretty well screened, even though you don't see anything immediately around the generator. And from this direction, the view of Houses Corner Road approaching the intersection, you have all the landscaping along the, between the detention pond and the parking area that that would block that view.
Okay.
Or at least buffer it.
Thanks.
Okay, if there's no other questions on the site, I know that the variances are listed in several different places, but I wanted to get them on record what we're asking for along with the preliminary and final site plan tonight. The minimum front, front yard to the principal building, we're proposing 61 feet where 100 feet is required. Minimum rear yard is proposed 38.6 feet, and that is 50, minimum, minimum 50 feet required. Front yard parking setback, I discussed that already, it's 50 feet required, we're proposing 19. There's a requirement for a rear yard parking setback to an RR or residential zone. That's referring to this corner of the side, what I'm calling the side parking lot. It's 18.7 feet where 25 feet is required. The maximum area allowed in the front yard, that is, we're requesting 95% of the parking in the front yard where 25% is required. In the lot area, that is an existing non-conforming condition, but nonetheless, we're asking for relief to allow, because the continuance of that is 65,144 square feet where 80,000 is, is required. That's a difference of almost 15,000 square feet. Just need to change my sheet here. Thank you for that. So just leading into the testimony, I want to talk a little more about the shape of the lot and what that means for the building envelope.
Mr. Dunn, just so we're clear, what you're pointing to now is part of the set that was submitted to the board with no changes?
That's correct.
What page of that set are you referring to?
This is Sheet 2 of the set that was, that was submitted to the board. It's the existing conditions map and boundary survey. Basically, if you look at the building envelope that results in the irregular shape and size of a lot, it's, the building envelope itself is a triangle. My geometry nomenclature is escaping right now. I don't know if it's a sosseles or what it is, but it's a triangle, and it would be very difficult to, to get a building, a reasonably sized building to work on this within that building envelope for a couple of reasons, although the area of that triangle that, within the building envelope is 4,800 square feet, which sounds, you know, fairly large. Once you start squaring off a building in there, it becomes very small, but I believe that, board member, I can't read that from here, you were asking about why we can't make it more compliant. You could always, almost always make something more compliant, but it's, it's, again, it's about that balance. What building works with the site, with, with the neighborhood? Is it overbuilt? Is it out of scale? My opinion is that this building works for the site, even though it does need these variances. A smaller building, you know, by a couple feet here and, here and there, would still work, I think. I know Travis is going to have my head for saying that, but it's true, of course, it would, it would still work in some ways. It wouldn't accommodate his needs, and it's my opinion also that by, by shaving a few feet here and there, it wouldn't have any less or more impact on the neighborhood, so I, I just wanted to keep that in mind. We definitely looked at different things and how we could most comply, but I, I think that the building we have here is appropriate. So in planning testimony, there's, there's two things. We're, as we established before, we're not asking for a use variance, it's a permitted use, but we are asking for, as I listed, several setback variances. It's a, in my opinion, this is a classic C1 where it's a hardship variance, they call it, where there would be undue hardship to the, to require the applicant to adhere to strict compliance with your ordinance setback requirements due to the shape and shallowness of the lot and the size. There's really no other feasible place for, to put the parking areas as, as listed in the, as the criteria listed in Section 18, 4.29.2, which indicates for an industrial use in the ED zone, it should have those setbacks, as I listed. But in addition to the C1 hardship, I also believe this is, could fall under the C2 criteria if the board does not agree or accept that the size and shape has a, creates an undue hardship. Positive criteria is that it proposes and supports, the positive criteria of the proposal is that it supports goals A, G, and I of the land use law, and it provides benefits to me as a whole, not just to the applicant. That's very important. As we heard, there's, there's a growing need and, and a real need for pet care, medical care for animals. We've limited it to small animals, it's not going to have exotics like tigers and lions or horses or cows, it's just your, your household pets. It upholds those goals of master plan by providing an appropriate place for a business to help grow your economy in a, in a safe way here. Lot too small, an undersized lot, negative criteria. That could result in perceived overdevelopment or shoehorning a building or parking area into the lot. I don't think that this is applicable here because there are undeveloped areas that go beyond the boundary lines that would not be, would not be developed in the future, not likely. The open space I talked about in the front, the detention basin and the soccer fields in the back, and also because of site light, site layout and building size, in my opinion, is appropriate with sufficient buffering and landscaping. The impervious covers, impervious coverage and building coverage are also compliant, so even with these setbacks, not meeting the ordinance, it's still compliant in other ways. So it's my opinion that the grant, the variance would not have a negative impact on your zoning plan or the neighborhood. Any questions on the, variance testimony at this time?
Not right now.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. At this time, I'd like to call up Paul Ashworth. Mr. Brady, if you want, we can review his qualifications and swear him in as an expert.
Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And would you state your name, spell your last name, provide us with an address?
Sure. Paul Ashworth, EBA Architecture. Y.A. Ashworth, A-S-H-W-O-R-T-H.
Okay.
Paul Sanders, 49, Old Creamery Road, New Jersey, 07867.
I don't know if, I've seen Mr. Ashworth testify before, I know if this board has, so, Mr. Chair, you can.
Well, well, well.
Polify.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, only because I'm not familiar.
Of course. Mr. Ashworth, can you please provide the board with a summary of your professional qualifications and experience?
Yes, I'm an architect. I graduated from NJIT in 95.
Yes, I'm an architect, I graduated from NJIT in ninety-five, I am currently licensed in over a dozen states right now. All states are in good standings, and I've practiced out of New Jersey and over right around the corner for the last fourteen years.
And have you appeared before land use boards in Sussex County within the last year to provide testimony?
Yep, Byron, beginning of this year, right?
That's correct. If there are any other further questions, if not, I'd ask that the board recognize Mr. Ashworth as an expert in the field of architecture.
Okay, good to go.
Start my testimony, what I'd like to do is go over the, do I even need this with my voice?
Yes, please.
Okay, gotcha, I'll keep it low.
Only for the, I mean, we're recording.
Recording, got it, got it, got it, got it, some kind of loud. So I'd like to go over the floor plans to connect all the pieces that I think might have been missing between Dr. Surf's testimony and this way.
And Mr. Ashworth, as you put them up, if you'd indicate if they're the same ones that the board has, and if so, what page number, et cetera, et cetera, and then if you put up something new that the board doesn't have, like those color renderings, we'll, we'll mark them.
Absolutely, sir, so this is from the board submission, this is the first floor plan, and it is marked A dash two. So I think for this purpose, this is the entry, would you like to see this at the bottom first? For how you're visualizing it.
The orientation, for orientation purposes?
This is the entry, yep. Okay, so this is the entry for the parking lots, wrap around here, right? Route fifteen, Housers Corner Road. So as Travis said, the purpose of, and how he's going to operate the facility, is two waiting rooms, which are kind of smaller in size for what you would typically see, see for a facility of this size, reception, waiting, and then the exam rooms wrapped around the perimeter. So it's directly in, there's no other hallway or connection, they can come right in. Nice about it is there's a connecting looping hallway for their service all the way around the perimeter with access to every single one all the way around. There are two extra, there's a cat and a dog bereavement room, if you notice, there's separate entrance and exit from a vestibule right in, so that in times of mourning, you can in and out very quickly and, you know, not have to deal with anything else. Travis said, the treatment room, which is surgery, is a wide open area, and any actually connection point to like surgery here, dental procedure, they're all glassed areas. But this is all the back of house service that, you know, for surgery and veterinary care, very small doctor's office. This is important to note, the back corner right here is the break room. So if the parking for employees to be, you know, directed the furthest away, they're gonna park over here, they got an entrance to come right in, and then that path that you saw with the small patio is right off the break room. So we kind of kept it over there, utilities are all coming in from this face too. There is one extra entry here for the lobby with an elevator, two egress stairs, so completely safe from the second floor, and let me tie to that. This is drawing A three, just the next one in the set that is from the planning board presentation, or the planning board submission, sorry. So once again, you're just trying to line them up, there's the two stair towers, and this is the dog training area that Travis was speaking about, an open office area, and there's nothing really programmed in there, as I said, it was future, we didn't know exactly what's gonna go there, conference rooms, but I'm confident, building department on safety, egress and everything, that it's gonna, it's gonna meet all codes and meet his purposes. The boxes that you see out here, those are all the lower roof areas. The second floor is only this slot that you see right there. This is actually the tower, someone had asked a question, I can't remember which report it was, what is that? That's just open to below, that's all it is, it'd be a higher space, we'll have a ceiling in there, but that's just open to below. That's where actually the logo signage is too. And that's about it, it's showing a private office up there, and it's going to be open. I guess the point now is to get to the renderings and the little bit of confusion, so yes, there is a difference between what you see in this rendering, and I don't know if it really matters which one we use, but I do want to show you the comparison versus what we submitted. First thing I want to state is there is no change in the building, that model is exactly that model. No height, no window, nothing changed. All we did was work with Dr. Surf's wife, and I changed the material, seriously, we changed color of materials, that's really all it was. If it was masonry, it's masonry, and I'll explain it, it went from brick, it went to like a granite type stone. We did add some wood to the columns, we changed some things around, so let me explain it. That work where you can see it, I step off to the side. So this is what, this is sheet A five, it's the front and side elevation, exactly as submitted in the packet. So you can tell the block, main entry, the tower with the logo, covered canopy, and then there's kind of three levels of this elevation. You've got your covered canopy, you've got your block, which is called out as brick, it's now stone, and then you've got the EFIS, extra insulation finishing system, which is the whole second floor block. So when you look over here, one, two, three, same thing. So the only thing we really did was, we took this brownish color, are you ready for this? You're familiar with Dunkin' Donuts, I do a lot of them, you know that wood tone, fiber cement siding? Best stuff in the world, never rots and anything, and they will color paint it custom to any color, so it's what we had picked here. Decision was to go with a little bit darker of a palette, so what we did is just took it and made it a, I called it a battleship dark gray, and the brick, which was just a gray brick, we picked a granite type, like elfish type stone, as we call it there. You know, relatively small scale, not tiny, not like ledge or anything like that, but, you know, six inches by a foot. And then also what we did is we just took the columns and instead of keeping them this more modern, we added stone bases and wood column wraps, and that's really what it is. One of the questions was, and I'll flip it to the back so you can see, the renderings do not show the back, I just did two views of the front. But one of the question was, was hey, the back should have the same kind of aesthetic as, you know, coming up Route two oh six, or two, sorry, Route fifteen. Completely under, completely agreed. So the whole back is actually got windows to let light in where you need it, but most importantly, it's not like we cheesed out in vinyl siding there, it's gonna have the stone veneer across the entire back, and then it'll have the EFIS with the patterns up top. So it does carry that aesthetic straight around the building, all the way around. Again, this matches that just with the different color changes. So I guess, yes, we have the two renderings, and I don't have a marker to write on the shirt, on that surface, but we can mark.
You can mark on the back of it, right?
Yeah, I might be able to, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you could do that, we'll mark, one is A one oh two, one hundred two, one is A one oh three. And if you can tell me how to distinguish them.
You know, we can easily call it Route fifteen, and then Housers Corner, because one's more from Route fifteen.
Okay, so one oh two will be?
We'll make one oh two, it's this first one, Housers.
Okay.
Sorry, Route fifteen. Yep, it works, A one oh two, A one oh three, I'm assuming is your next number?
Exactly. And I'll call them photo simulations, is that?
The renderings, yeah, I mean, the renderings, yep. So that's, all right, that's about the end of the testimony, I'm sure we have questions, so.
Okay, so just so my notes are clear then, the materials and the color palettes that are on the set that came in with the application are not accurate. It's what's depicted on the renderings.
Correct.
Okay.
So initially, when, when I first saw the, the building in and of itself, I, I was only disappointed by one thing, and that was that I saw no peaks along those roof lines at all. So, so I do have to say that that, that was definitely one aesthetic that, that I was, I was disappointed in, especially when you had a great opportunity for two main portions to, to really kind of bring that, that in. Yeah, so un- understanding that you wanted a more contemporary vibe with, with the, the color choice now, given, given what it is, that, that makes it even less a part of, of the aesthetic that, that Sparta, you know, is, is trying to, to maintain or, you know, or, or vibe. So what are your thoughts on that?
So I, I understand the comment, but for this building in this location and what a veterinary clinic is, and you heard Dr. Surf's testimony before, it fits those criteria.
Yes, and his testimony also was that he cared more about what was going on inside the building than he did on what was going on outside the building, and I'm not looking to change what's going on inside the building, not one speck.
Understood, I mean, I stand pretty firm that this aesthetic, I, I, this is my architecture, I mean, this is what I design. I have several other buildings, I have houses in Lake Mohawk that are popping up that are gonna start having this aesthetic.
Is it, I heard the word farmhouse mentioned earlier on, I think, I think by the doctor. Can you help me see any references to farmhouse or the character of the town?
No, there's really not much of a farmhouse vibe to this, this is a contemporary, you know, it's a contemporary architecture, is really what it is, I mean, it's contemporary, more modern.
When I look at the landscape of, of that area in which the building is placed, that's a lovely area that has rolling hills, but then you have a rectangle there out in the middle of the, the landscape, I think that's what maybe we're alluding to, I mean, we have the Pimple Hills there, you know, that everybody knows, and, and it would be great if, you know, it was more of a, would it be a Frank Lloyd Wright, or something that, that fit in with the natural environment, which we love.
Part of the, if, if I may to that, respond to that, so part of the issue is obviously it setbacks the site, and we have very, very limited space to work with, and as Travis had testified, this six thousand square feet is, I mean, we had to push and pull and make concessions to get it to work. So when you do that, it's very difficult to say, hey, let's, let's, let's modify the, 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 almost, I don't wanna say boxy, but you know, that, that more modern aesthetic, because that's what a modern aesthetic is. It's hard to get away from that without giving up program and square footage. And with that, it affects everything, obviously everything that Mr. Dunn testified to, all, all your setbacks, all the variances that were required, impervious. It's one of the reasons why it is that way.
Just like round off the top a little bit?
Opinion could have been taken care of with two minor peaks.
You know, with that, ready Travis? There is a possibility, if we do something curved and add another kind of element into it, that's a possibility.
I, I would, I would love to see something that, that gave it more of a, a softer vibe.
Yeah, we can do that.
It, it appears to me that most of the building, including the back, I, I know, I think you said you're striving for it to be the back to match the other parts of the building. To me, I see lots of white, flat white, gray, I guess it's EFIS or, or is it, yeah, so I guess not siding.
It could be EFIS, it's gotta be an insulated system, so it could be an insulated metal panel, EFIS, from this distance, it'll all be the same.
Yeah.
An off-white, yeah.
Is there, would you consider adding more of the wood or wood tone, whatever that is, that you have somewhat in the front there to other sections of the building, and more stone, to, to make the sides and the back actually look like they fit in with the front?
I think I'm okay with it, but if that's something that's a strong request, and it's obviously gonna move this along, there's a way maybe that if we did almost like sunscreens over those rear windows, and we bring in another color and texture such as wood, we can figure something out, that might help. It will break it up from being, I think you're, I don't think you're gonna read the top white EFIS, because that's setback like twenty feet, that's up there, it's the stone face. I mean, we can find something to break that up.
Are you talking, kind of like what they put on the, on the industry restaurant out the side?
Bingo.
Like that, okay.
A little more farmy.
Even if it was pure black, Industries is pure black, right, even if it was pure black, it says pre-manufactured metal canopies, do something like that.
Is, is there a reason for black, being, I think you said earlier that it can be painted any color, basically, right? Some of the sub, some of the surfaces?
Some of the surfaces, yeah, the stone, obviously, it's a natural stone.
I was just hoping for something a little warmer than, than something, I mean, I understand that it's, that it's a clinic, but something that's a little bit more inviting than, than cold.
If I may, I'm just gonna move this here so I can, two. Soften it if we take, this turns into a lighter gray. Almost blends in, I won't say blends in, there's still some contrast, but it's not so kind of on off.
I'm gonna disagree with the rest of the crew here, but I actually really love it.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not saying it's not a beautiful building. I'm saying that it's, it's not part of, of the, the aesthetic that, that we're looking to, you know, continue and maintain within the confines of, of the town, or at least that's what we've been, you know, the direction we've been moving toward. I mean, I understand that, you know, we weren't here for North Village, and if we were, that would look very different. You know, we weren't here for the Beyond the Building, if we were, that might look very different. So, you know, not saying that they're not beautiful structures, just saying that, that, you know, it might have been a different, might have been a different outcome. So.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna be the most, oh, go ahead, Miss Number.
When I saw that, I was like, wow, that's like Beverly Hills. I mean, it's, it's beautiful.
Right, I'm not saying it's not a beautiful building, it is, it is a lovely structure, I am a huge fan of architecture, it is a lovely structure. I am not diminishing your talent at all.
So I don't wanna be the most unpopular person in the room, or up on the dais, but I, I just wanna caution that as, as far as the applicant is willing to make changes, that we, you know, that they're amenable to that, but I, but I also want us to respect that the, the applicant, the, the veterinarian had, had also noted that they had gone through a lot of changes because he and his wife, this is something that he, you know, is gonna reflect on his preferences as well.
Which I understand.
You know, I know, totally, and I just wanted to indicate that it looks like even the board itself is mixed, and so with architecture, it always, it always ends up being a lot of cooks in the kitchen, and so I just wanna make sure that we're, we're on a straight path forward.
You know, the, the idea is that when it comes down to it, and, and the decisions are made, when, when the public does get to stand up and have, and have these conversations, that we're not getting called out for all the same things that I'm discussing right here, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So I'm trying to preempt all of that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So anyway, uh...
Madam Chairwoman, it's, uh, ten minutes past midnight.
Yeah, we're moving, we're moving forward, exactly.
I was actually gonna make you, make a suggestion that
That we continue?
The rest of this hearing.
Yeah, that we continue.
That we table the rest of the hearing.
Right, so basically, we would, we would make a motion to continue.
Continue the, no, continue the application.
Yeah, continue the application.
Application to, to another night, yes. But I was just trying to wrap up this portion of the testimony in order before I did that, but yeah, that's, that's on the table. Does anybody else have any questions of this witness at this point in time?
Just if you could maybe do something that has like that overhead kind of look to it, I think that would dress it up enough, and I, other than that, I like it.
Yeah, I would, I would just add, you know, with all due respect, there is farmland, there's vacant land, open space there right now, and there's a lot of open space, the fields that belong to the church and the school there across the street. It's still, it would be great if you could consider that and what's now gonna possibly pop up there and have it blend in with something that people, lots of people are gonna see every single day if this goes through from all sides and with the materials, and if there's a chance that we do happen to carry this forward to see some of those options, that'd be wonderful.
So that having been said, there are no more current questions, I'd like to propose a motion to continue this application. That's, that's something that's probably gonna get done next time. There, there are a few items on the agenda that, that we're gonna wrap up. So motion at the dais to continue this application until twelve twenty?
A motion.
Second?
Second. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Madam Chairwoman.
Apologize for keeping you so late, and that's Apologize for keeping you so late, and that, that, uh, things are gonna get moved forward, we're not done yet.
You say when we're going to? Madam Chair, what, what date is this being carried to, so we can make sure we preserve notice for?
We're, we do have a hearing on twelve twenty, but I mean, if we wanna complete this, then that would be the way to do it. Unless you're not available on twelve.
I have a meeting that night, but I can have one, one of the other people in my office cover that meeting, and I'll finish this meeting.
Amicable to everyone?
You guys can get your revisions in, so the board can see them? Okay, so if we can announce then that we're going to twelve twenty at seven o'clock here, no further, no further notice is gonna be given?
Correct.
Okay.
We haven't adjourned yet. No, we have not.
We're gonna still do stuff.
Everybody's ready to leave, trust me, I was ready to leave two hours ago, but the unfortunate circumstances.
You're the best.
He's still in the room, it's okay.
That's when you say, you know what, why, the harder hearing.
It's okay. Thank you.
I know, thank you.
Good night. Or good morning. Yeah, good morning, good morning.
What's critical here, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
We'll skip the reports.
Okay, executive decision. I realize that there is normally an, an open portion to the public, but there's really literally no public left in this room except for Jen. Jen, do you have any questions that you need to ask us at this point in time? Okay, so that having been said, we, I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay.
You, you're welcome to come to the microphone.
Now that I have my coat on, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, your name, address?
Okay, my name is Melissa Towey, T O W E Y, and I live at Three Shawnee Trail in Sparta, in Lake Mohawk.
Okay, welcome, what can we do?
Thank you. Um, this has been very informative, I learned a lot today, so thank you. Dr. Surf asked me to come on, on behalf of him as well, just as a resident of Sparta. I have been seeing Dr. Surf with my pets since not long after he opened.
This is basically testimony, not questioning.
I apologize, I thought, I thought that this, because we had moved to the open portion for items that weren't on the agenda, but if this is testimony based, can you come back?
Yeah, if it's like this time on the.
That, yeah, that. Yeah, if you can come back for, for the, the next hearing, which is December twentieth.
I just came up here because they said.
Come on up.
Happy to appreciate it, thank you. All right, so nothing from the public, and now move to adjourn.
I have one question.
Oh, okay, sorry, one question.
One question on other board business, I just wanted to ask, the Wilson family, the concept review was almost two mon, almost two months ago, it was October eighteenth. Have we heard anything from them, and we, we need to move forward, I think, who might need to notice them that they, if they're gonna come back for a concept review?
We have not heard back anything from them.
Okay, so I guess we'll see if they're interested still and receive from there.
Well, in their court.
Yeah, well, I guess we should give them a timeframe, is what I'm suggesting, instead of it being open ended.
Well, I, we, that's something we can absolutely discuss the next, or offline.
Offline, maybe, because the next meeting will be over two months, so, okay. All I have.
Okay. Ernie, you're on.
Second.
Have a good night, ladies and gentlemen.
There's not compresses. I actually suggested that upfront.
Yes, you did, and I appreciate every side of that wrong agenda, yeah.
I'm nervous, hell. Hell, man, was good.